All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started for our council meeting. We have a full house here, down here at the city office, and we're excited to have that many people here. To get started, I've asked Randy Chipman to give us our motivational talk and prayer, so if he'll come on up, just come right here.
No pressure, there's a lot of people.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody coming out to hear my message today. It's fantastic. I was a little surprised when Mike asked me to speak for 30 minutes, so I, you know, whatever, but here we go. I appreciate the opportunity, and first of all, let me just say, good luck to those. I know it's election day, I know anybody willing to put their name out there on a ballot is got a lot more courage than I do, so good luck to that. And just really briefly, a couple weeks ago, our neighborhood had a neighborhood, we have an annual neighborhood Halloween 5K that our kind of neighborhood gets together and does, and it's pretty fun, and that was a couple weeks ago. And I took my two youngest daughters, my daughter that's six went, and they're dressed up in their Halloween costumes, and at the starting line, she was there, holding hands with another six-ish year old boy, and I talked to him for a second, and I assumed they were great friends from school, and they ran the race together and played and had fun, and afterwards, I asked her who that was, you know, I'm a concerned dad, who is holding hands with my six-year-old daughter, and all those type of questions, and she said, "I have no idea, I just met him."
You're in trouble.
And I thought about that, you know, over the last couple weeks, on a lot of different aspects, and as I thought about, you know, something to say tonight, I guess, really what I thought about more than anything, in a world that has so much hate, and the tragedies that we see, and, you know, all of the negativity, kindness is sorely lacking, and I thought, if we could have the heart and the love of a six-year-old, the world would be a much better place. And over the tragedies that we've seen, I just don't know that there's a way to legislate those actions, but I think if we're kind, and we're aware of our neighbors and who they are, and we could have an impact. And the nice things that we say to individuals, we never know the depth that that carries, in addition to the negative things, when we say things negatively, we don't know the effect that has. So the thought, more than anything, is to be aware, in the season of giving and festivities and holidays, be kind and be aware of those around us, know our neighbors, get to know them, so that we can be aware of their needs, and serve them, and have a stronger, better community. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I've asked Councilman Gordon to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Would the audience please rise? Please repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Okay, we have some neat things going on here in our town. I'd like to invite the Maple Mountain High School girls soccer team to come in, and their coach. If you don't know by now, they took state in soccer, so come on in, just line right up there, yeah. You can, hey, you can look at us, because you're gonna be on camera, and the camera's right here, and millions of people are gonna be watching you, so be careful.
Wow, look at all of them.
Yeah, look at this. How many can you have on this field at one time?
Come over this way.
That's good.
Keep coming. There we go.
All right, look at this. Did you bring the whole school? That's cool. This is awesome. Where's the coach? Good job, he's herding them all in. Coach, how about coming up and explaining to us what happened here with this good-looking group of individuals? While you're there, introduce yourself.
All right, my name is Jeff Lewis, first-year coach for Maple Mountain High School Girls' program, and as you can see, we have a great group of ladies here. This is actually only about half, to be honest.
Oh, my heavens.
So we get an opportunity to teach over 60 girls this year, and, you know, it was a fun year. I think this year, all the newspapers and articles and schools kind of wrote these girls off, that there's no way they could win a finals. And at the beginning of the year, we decided that this year's gonna be different, and a lot of these girls made some changes and made some sacrifices, personnel, positions, the work that we put in. If you saw these girls working out in the weight room, you wouldn't recognize them in all these dresses and all this nice hair done up right now. But it's been a pleasure to work with them this year, and we really appreciate your guys' hospitality with the parade that you did for us. These girls sure deserve credit and some attention for what they've done, so we really appreciate you guys inviting us here today.
Well, I tell you what, they represented Spanish Fork very well up there, and we appreciate that, we really do, and all that you do, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
No, no, just here, right here. So just make the line, shaking your hand, and guess what, you don't have to stay here for all the council meetings.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you guys.
That's real. Congrats.
Way to go.
Tell me your name.
Way to go.
Tell me your name.
Congratulations.
Your name?
Okay.
Hi.
Congratulations. Awesome, you guys, congratulations to you.
You guys were awesome.
Way to go. Congratulations to you.
So which one of you did the backflip after you won?
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Hey, good job, way to go.
Hey, you didn't know I did that, did you?
Good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Awesome, you guys.
Safe job.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Represent girls.
Congratulations. Way to go. Awesome, way to go.
You want to take a moment here, get a quick photo for our school? You bet. Ladies and gentlemen, just come get right in here. We'll do a quick, and then we'll get some shaky ass, is that all right? You wanna come up here, Coach?
I'll get set up here by the lady.
Careful, he does selfies when he's in the cameras.
Probably three selfies on. Where did I end up?
All right, yeah, where are we?
Way to go. Yeah, congratulations.
I never forget those selfies.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, black hole through high school, girls. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Way to go, guys. Awesome job. Way to go.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Thanks for coming. Okay?
Hey, good job.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Good job, you guys. Congratulations. Awesome.
Okay.
Nice job.
I will make you a.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Congratulations, girls.
Way to go.
Way to go.
Thanks, Coach. Good work.
All right, that was fun. Fun, fun.
Good crew.
Okay, now, we've got another great honor that came to an individual, and also someone representing Spanish Fork. Dale, would you like to come up, introduce to this young man?
Yes, sir. My honor. This individual I'm gonna introduce needs no introduction. In fact, I had, I asked him to bring his wife with him, so that he would behave and wouldn't ride horses into council meeting. So, Steven, you were here? Also, he didn't pay any attention to that. Can I have you come up, brother, Steven Money? Bring your wife with you, will you, Janelle?
Yep, 'cause you couldn't have gotten that without her.
You can come stand up here for a minute. Why we brag about you? We know that everything he's accomplished is because of you, so, isn't that right, brother? Huh? So let me tell you, we got a great phone call. Nick Hanks got a great phone call from the PRCA headquarters last week, the end of last week, and they broke some news to us that we just, we wanted to shout from the rooftops, so here we are. Steven has been selected, and it's already hit the, obviously, the media. So Steven has been selected to receive the John Justin Committee Person of the Year Award. Now, let me tell you what that means. There's 700 rodeos throughout the nation, which means there's 700 rodeo committees, and so this is the National Committee Person of the Year. So out of thousands and thousands of committee members, Steven was selected for this honor. And you guys know as well as I do, that this is well-deserved. Hey, that's a good-looking horse.
The guy's not too bad either, but that horse is good-looking. Spacing the right way, Dale.
Funny. So next month, at the National Convention of the Pro Rodeo Cowboys Association, Steven's gonna be given this award, and, which is very prestigious. It's kind of a lifetime achievement award, and we know that Steven has spent a lifetime, 34 years, right, as a rodeo director. I'll give you a chance to talk, hold on here just a second. 34 years he spent in charge of our Fiesta Days rodeo, and we've talked about this numerous times, but if you want to see all the awards that we've collected for our rodeo, and the accolades that we've received, you can go to the Fiesta Days Rodeo Hall of Fame, which is in the High Chaparral Building at the fairgrounds. And all of those awards have been received under Steven's leadership, including induction into the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame. So Steven has a whole long laundry list of things that he's accomplished with our rodeo, and we are proud, we are proud of what he's done, and on behalf of Spanish Fork City, and the many rodeo committees that have served with Steven, and he'll be the first one to tell you that he hasn't done this alone, but it has been under his leadership, congratulations and thank you for the many wonderful years that he's provided and served to our rodeo and brought it to what it is today, and so we love and appreciate him for what he's done and recognize that. I had to pull him off of a horse, he's herding cattle now, he thinks he's a real cowboy. So anyway, congratulations, buddy.
Thank you.
Let me just say one other thing, as you guys know, and I wasn't kidding, 34 years, Janelle sacrificed a lot as well, and her family, and we do recognize that and appreciate the sacrifice that she has given to our community in order to allow Steven to do what he's done here, so, okay, it's all yours. Yeah, but I think you have three minutes.
You know, I think I've dipped in the right place to receive this award, because the first person I gotta thank is my wife, and my family especially. I think I kind of put the rodeo in front of them all of these years. I've got Janelle to go with me to a couple rodeos, but I don't know if I've ever sat through an entire rodeo with her, kind of, but, you know. But like you say, when you have a committee like we've had in all of these years, and that, it was just a thrill to work, and it just made your heart burn for more and more. You know, I lived at rodeo all my life, and I really loved it, but the menstruation that we've had in the council, the support that they gave you, how can you not go to the top? And most of all, when you got the citizens that we've got in Spanish Fork City, you're the best. I just happen to be the one that got the thing, but I think this goes to all of us, everybody in here and everybody in the city that goes to the great arena that we have and the menstruation and the committee. Everybody got this award. Spanish Fork got this award, and that's great. Thank you.
I'll tell you, that's a well-deserved award, and I believe that's the first one in Utah to ever receive that award, and that's pretty impressive. You know, Steve's done a great job, and he's well-renowned in the rodeo world, and everybody knows Steve Money and knows what he does, and we appreciate you. All right, moving along, we have an officer that we want to swear in. Chief, you wanna come and say a few words about this?
I'm happy to report that we're fully staffed. We've got the new hires done that the council approved, and we filled the positions of those who retired and moved on to another life, and we're fully staffed with, maybe the citizens would like to know, we have 35 sworn officers now, 36, counting myself. And so we're fully staffed with a lot of great people, and our last hire is David Bowen. If he'd step forward, please. David comes to us from some experience. He's got a couple of years of work over in Provo, and then a couple of years in Corrections before that. He's got a great support system here, he's got mom and dad and wife and kids here, and he's been through our field training program already, passed through that with flying colors, faster than some of the others, just because of his experience and attitude and aptitude, and we're grateful to have David on board with us today. Mayor? Ask as many questions as you can, but I won't have the answer.
Do you know what Councilwoman Beck drives? You'll find out. You'll find out if you just sit on Center Street.
You gotta remember, this kid was just a punk kid in my neighborhood, drew him out, so I'm glad to see you made something out of yourself. All right, can you repeat after me? Can you raise your right hand? All right. I.
Hi.
Say your name.
William David Bowen.
You saw me swear that I will support and obey and defend.
You saw me swear that I will support, obey, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This has been a good day so far. It's great. We'll go to public comments now. Anyone that would like to address the mayor of the council, you can come up, you got three minutes, and tell us what you, introduce yourself, and then tell us what you'd like to talk about. All right, seeing none, I'll go to council comments. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, a couple of things. We had library board met just a while ago, just discussed the numbers from the senior program or the summer programs. Numbers were right as expected, just a little bit down in some of the teen areas, but all in all, the library's being well-used. There is, we do have some members of the board that are coming to the end of their term, and so will be, there'll be time for some names and appointment and process at that point. Also, to report on the Veterans Council, we met this last week, we have a new president, President John Duncan of the Veterans Council, he's from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I also want to extend appreciation to President Steve Stone of the American Legion, who served as the Veterans Council President. They've got work ahead of them, way forward, but the council really is working hard to meet the interests of veterans in the community as well as Veterans Affairs, so there's a bright future in store for the council, and that's all I have.
Great. Councilmen and all.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to invite a friend up that has a lot to do with our active and healthy committee, and him and, I knew he'd be here again this year, he didn't think he'd be here again this year, but he is here, so I'd like to invite my friend Lyle Timmons up to tell us what a great accomplishment he's again had at the Senior Games that happened just last month.
Well, I got lucky.
Yeah.
In December, I fell on the ice and broke my right elbow and my left thumb, and so it took about six months to get over that, and so I went to, let's see, went to Pasadena's Senior Games in California, where I have a couple of sons and some grandkids, and was able to get three gold medals.
Oh, wow.
There. And one is for the hot shot. We have five spots on the floor, and one minute to shoot from each one, and you have to shoot all of them, you have to rebound your own ball, and the total number of points that's added up determines who the winner is. And the three-point and free throw shooting, I was able to win. The closest one got to, he was 69. They go in five-year increments, and I'm 87, so. I didn't have anybody to compete against, but I always try to compete against whoever the next best guy is, so I had to go clear down to age 69 and find him. And then we have the free throw contest, and after I got these medals, I came home and was working out in the garden and tripped on a trip hazard, I shouldn't add there, and broke my left wrist and my right thumb. So then I had to get ready for the Huntsman Senior Games, and I asked the physical therapist how long it'd be before I could shoot, and he said, "Well, you've got just about six weeks," and that was just about time for October, so I went down there, and I sometimes have my, I have some grandkids in Cedar City and some in Las Vegas, and I asked them not to come this time because I didn't want to embarrass myself in front of them. And somehow, I got lucky and got two goals and two silvers. Three-point and free throw shooting, you shoot 25 free throws and six three-pointers, and my chief competition is a fellow on my own team. I have the Utah Pioneer's 80-85-year-old basketball team, we play 3-on-3 at half-court, and he just moved into my age group, so I had to compete against him, and he went first, and he made three out of six three-pointers, and I couldn't even hit the rim when it was warming up. So I just said to myself, "You're toast." But fortunately, I was able to hit three three-pointers also out of six, but I hit three more free throws than he did, so I got the gold in that, and our softball team, I play on a team from Canada, Alberta, we, three years ago, we've taken the silver, we can't quite get past this one team from Oregon, but anyway, I was fortunate enough to do well enough, and hopefully I'll get past my injuries and do better next year.
Sounds like you just need to stay on the basketball court and not go in the yard or the garden. It'd be a lot safer for you.
Stay off the ice, yeah.
Well, Lyle's been an inspiration to me for a couple years now, Mayor, but with the active and healthy movement now going on two years old, it sure has been timely to get to know Lyle and to see him be an inspiration and an example to all of us, whether we're 87 or whether we're seven in this community, that Lyle doesn't give up, and he works hard at what he does, and he has well-deserved rewards for it. So from the active and healthy community, we'd like to recognize Lyle tonight and give him a big round of applause, if you're okay with that. I wouldn't bet on him to not see him here again next year, Mayor, no matter what happens.
So all you scouts, you take a look here, see where you're gonna be when you're 87.
Just a couple more things along the active and healthy and Parks and Recreation vein, Mayor. We had some exciting meetings happen in the Parks and Recreation world these last couple of weeks that I'd just like to give you a snippet of real quick. We won't go over detail till they're here later, and if I showed you pictures, it would wake up Brandon over there on the end, even it would, so it's pretty exciting stuff. But the next phases of the River Trail are starting up. If you walk up the River Trail by the golf course, it ends at what we call Dripping Rock, but the design phase of the River Trail that extends up from there is actually getting complete. So it'll cross the river, it'll cross the river one way, and then it'll cross the river again, and actually get up on the golf course by hole 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and go along the golf course. Then the next phase will go up by the reservoir, and so Dale's department has been awesome to work with, all the guys from his department, Bart, Jared, Corey, Lua, and Sean, along with the guys from PEC, have just been awesome to sit in these meetings with and give them recommendations, and then it's drawn and comes back to you, and that's gonna be so cool to be able to get on that trail, go all the way up to the reservoir from, well, from downtown, from the sports park here, but also from where it ends at the golf course. The other exciting news in the Parks and Recreation is the final phase of the sports park. Again, I don't want to show you those pictures either, Brandon, but we got pickleball courts that will be built. I know a lot of people have been waiting for those. The west end of the sports park, where it's not complete, it hasn't been complete for a while, it is approved in the budget to get some of that work done. And that design, we got a little trouble with a gas line we didn't know was there, we found out was there, so we had to reconfigure stuff a little bit, but eventually, it'll be a number of pickleball courts, some pavilions, some open grass area, along with a couple Little League baseball fields there.
Just note, pickleball is the fastest-moving sport in the Huntsman Senior Games.
Yes.
They doubled their courts last year, and they're still becoming.
We're gonna give you, Lyle, one year to practice pickleball, then we expect a medal from down at the Senior Games to bring back home. So it is, it's a great sport, and the citizens will love it, young and old. So some exciting Parks and Rec committee meetings that I've had. The other thing I'd like to, Tyler's helped me with here, is with the League of Cities and Towns, I've been asked to chair a constitution committee, the constitution and the bylaws. Oddly enough, the committee, or excuse me, the constitution hadn't been written, updated since 1990 in the league's organization, so we wanted to have a few tidbits of information of what else was in 1990. Brandon, who was the president in 1990?
George.
It was George W. Bush, okay.
That was a safe bet.
Got it, yep.
It was the wrong George, yeah, that was George Senior.
It was Daddy George.
My bad.
This was John Stockton.
Wait, had you graduated high school yet in 1990? Don't get anything else wrong this whole time, he just got the civics part wrong. Just be patient. Okay, 1990 sports style, this is the last time the constitution was written there, I didn't know that. I didn't know where you got that from, that's an old picture there, but.
Is that you?
Which one, the left or the right?
The right.
I was styling in 1990. Spanish Fork's mayor?
Okay, let's hope the picture's right, and is it?
This is Marie Huff, great mayor. She was the board member of the League of Cities and Towns back at that time as well, yeah. Discussed at council meeting, November 7th, 1990. Mayor was a council member back then, right? Mayor?
Yeah.
It's accepted for a three-quarter ton truck of 15,760, right there. You wish you could do that these days, Dale, right? Spanish Forks population. Brandon, you ought to be close to this one.
11,000, wow.
11,000 and 40,000 today, so that's a big jump between 90 to 2017. And like Tyler said, there are a lot of things have changed since 1990 to 2017, and so does the league's constitution to make sure and represent the better interests of all the cities and towns in the state of Utah, which we're a proud member of. And so I'm excited to be on that committee and head that up to redraw those. So any recommendations you guys have as far as that constitution, we'll be sharing it, so you can line item it, and we can take it up there and have our input at the League of how to be better represented. Other than that, oh, Active and Healthy Movement had Susan Chapman invited the mayor and I up to Sierra Bonita for Red Ribbon Week to speak a little bit to those students up there. They were great last week, really bright kids. Mr. Evans, I think Stacy and Chad will agree that Mr. Evans at Diamond Fort Junior High invited us to speak to a civics class as well, which is great to meet those kids. And then lastly, Mayor, a South Utah Valley Municipal Water Association meeting we'll have this Thursday, and we'll report next time on that.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Argel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of things. The animal shelter held their board meeting last week, and we put in a new chair for the board, which was John Jackson from Mapleton. Chief Jackson accepted that, and will be the board of that going forward. Also, would just like to do a little shout-out for the shelter with their new director, which is Kirsten Mumford. She has been doing an awesome job. She's got grants and new friends, friends is one of them, new animal friends that's come to the shelter, which are sharing costs and helping us improve the cost of the shelter, which of course comes back to Spanish Fork City's bottom line. We share the shelter with eight other cities, and the shelter resides here in Spanish Fork. But there's been some good things going on, and just if you're interested in adopting a pet, please consider the Spanish Fork Animal Shelter. They've got many animals, cats and dogs, down there that you can go take a look at and see what's going on down there. Also, just want to say a little thing about the seniors. They had their Thanksgiving membership meal on Friday, which was very good and always is. The seniors now have a newsletter out that they have got a company that come to them and started doing a newsletter rather than just one page. It's now 12 pages, and a lot of the business communities in Spanish Fork have donated to that, to put an ad into that, and just wanted to make sure that those businesses are aware of how much that's appreciated. That newsletter has been very well received, both by the seniors and the community, because it helps to get out some of the things that's going on with the seniors and at the senior center, and has been a great success. And the new director, Vernajoe, has been doing a wonderful job down there, and it hasn't been easy. She's cleaned up the place down there and changed a few things, and as you know, most of us are pretty hard to take change, especially when you get older. Even my mom mentions she's 89, and she doesn't have to listen to people telling her to change. So it's been some good things going on down to the Senior Citizen Center. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Councilmember Beth.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, scouts, for being here. About three years ago, I lived in your neighborhood. I don't know if any of you even remember back then, but you guys are paying pretty close attention. Thanks for being here, and hopefully it's a good night for you. Like Mike said, Chad, Mike and I each took one or two classes at the Diamond Fort Junior High yesterday, and good group of kids, and one of them was, they were super excited about the recent ribbon cuttings of Canyon Creek and the stores there, as well as Walmart. They were really excited about Walmart because a lot of them live up on the east side of town, and they're really excited for the movie theater to open in December. They were, they got giddy over being open for Star Wars, so they're happy about that. I'll invite Heather Yowd, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, to come up and report on all things Chamber.
Yep. I have a few things. The trick-or-treating this year was great. We had a ton of kids. We had a lot of participation, so I heard nothing but good things about that. So thanks to everyone who participated with that. The farmer's market is finally finished. Was wonderful this year. One of the big things that we did this year is we started accepting SNAP benefits. So we got, we received a grant from the Active and Healthy to help us buy some of the equipment that we needed to run the SNAP program. And just to kind of give you an update on that, because of the SNAP, we had 53 new customers. We collected $3,075 just in SNAP and $1,391 in the double-up, which is a part of the Utahns Against Hunger program. So that's just over $4,300 that was able to go back into the local farmers, into their coffers. So it was a really good program, and I think it really helped out a lot of those people who wouldn't have been able to come to the market otherwise. So, and then we have our Business of the Month this month is Triple T. We went there today and helped them celebrate, so we appreciate them. They do a lot for our community. We currently have Chamber Board elections running. They'll go until the 15th of November, so if you're part of the Chamber, please go vote if you haven't done it already. Two more things. We have our Olive Garden ribbon cutting on November 20. Everyone's really excited, so we hope you guys will all come out and help us celebrate. It's early in the morning at 9:00 a.m. And then we have our Winter Lights Parade on the 24th. So if you haven't submitted for a float, get it done.
Yes, Mayor, we're taken care of. Elaine Hansen has got our float up and going. And if I can just publicly thank our Chamber of Commerce. She just nonchalantly comes up here and says, "Trick-or-treat went great. We finished up the farmer's market." But those things make our city better than the average city, I think, that we neighbor. I think you guys and your efforts, the scarecrow contest was the biggest yet, right, Heather? Those scarecrows are so fun to look at. I wanted to just say, the winners, the sloth from Triple T won for the business entry. The school winner was Reese Elementary. And then families and adults can also participate. So this is not just for businesses. And the adult winner was Angie Gorrell, I think that was her name. So thank you to all of our residents who participated and engaged with that. And then just all the time and effort for the farmer's market. We love the Chamber taking care of that. That's three months of every single Saturday for six-plus hours, taking an application, setting up, taking down, meetings, the marketing, everything. You guys take care of it all. So just know that we really appreciate the Chamber of Commerce in our city, and that's all, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Well, that's easy. Just want to say a few things on your trick-or-treat on Main Street. That gets bigger and bigger and bigger every year. You know, first time we did it, a long time ago, we ran out of candy, and we went and got more. I got 2,000 pieces of candy this year, and I gave everyone out. I gave the last one out 10 minutes after three, so, yeah. And they love it. I've had a lot of comments come back from the citizens how much they love that, so thank you. You know, you're right, she doesn't get enough. Thanks for what they do and all the businesses that put that on, so thank you. Also, I've had the opportunity to go around and visit with a couple of businesses that we have here in town that's been here for a while, that's probably been here, oh, maybe about a year or some, a little longer. And each one just talked about how thrilled they are to be here in Spanish Fork. They've moved here from different locations, and they talk about how great the citizens have been and how much they enjoy being a part of this community. And so I want to just tell the community, thank you for welcoming these businesses. I talked to a manager in, up there in one of the businesses up in Canyon Creek, and she's moving here from Bountiful, and they're pretty excited to move down here. So good things are happening here in Spanish Fork, and we love seeing those things. Okay, oh, and also, you've got just an hour and a half to vote if you haven't voted. Appreciate all those who voted. It's a little different this year. We voted by mail, but if you didn't get a ballot or you haven't voted yet, you can still go down to our Senior Citizen Center and vote, study out the candidates you want, and vote for who you'd like. And we appreciate all those who have voted and use their constitutional rights to do that and make a difference. So thank you for all those who voted. Okay, Spanish Fork 101, snow plowing. It's got to be Chris.
Okay, we have a little video that SFCN made for us last year. It's a minute and a half, so maybe if we could watch that and maximize it.
Tonight, we bring you updates regarding Spanish Fork's snow.
Can we get the volume?
A new ordinance has issued requiring citizens to remove vehicles.
So let's, we'll skip the video. All right, so what the video would have told you, and anyone can go online to our snow plowing website and view it, but it talks about, two years ago, we passed, the city council passed an ordinance which restricted parking on the roads during a snowstorm. And the parking on the sides of the roads during the snowstorm really slows down our snow plows and makes it so that we can't clear the street from side to side. Maybe if you could scroll up to the bottom of this, scroll down to the bottom, right here, okay. So there's four reasons why this ordinance was passed. First of all, if we cannot have parking on the sides of the street while it is snowing, then we can clear the streets a lot quicker and more thoroughly. Second is we'll have a lot less incidence of damaging these vehicles that are on the side of the streets. The roads are really slippery when our plows are coming around corners and when they're trying to clear as much of the road as possible. And when we have these trailers and vehicles out on the side of the road, a lot of them were days and days on end, so they're covered with snow and not as visible. It's hard for us to keep from damaging them, and sometimes the snow gets harder, and we're blowing it off to the side of the road, and it hits the vehicles, and that damages them as well. The next thing is it's a lot safer for our snow plow drivers, especially on some of the steep roads that they're coming down. When there's cars parked on the side of the road and they're trying to weave in and out of cars, but they're coming down a hill that's slippery and where you can slide out of control, it makes it a lot easier for our plow drivers to navigate these very large vehicles down steep roads. And then one other effect that this ordinance is having is when people leave vehicles and trailers on the side of the road for long periods of time, perhaps when they're broke down or what have you, it kind of clears up the road. And we've gotten a lot of comments on how when the roads are forced to be cleared with all of these snow incidents, then it clears the roads and makes them a lot more pleasant to drive down. But we do get a lot of questions about snow plowing, so if you could scroll back up to the ways, one of the things that people ask us a lot is, is what are our priorities for plowing snow? And so if you go to our website on snow plowing, they're listed here. Our number one priority is going to be arterial roads, major collector roads, school bus routes, and streets with really steep grades, that if we don't get ahead of the ice on those, then it's really dangerous for the resident. After we've taken care of these roads and we feel like they are in good condition, then we move to our priority two roads, which are minor collector roads and high-volume through residential roads. So if there's a road that connects a residential area out to the collector arterial roads and has a higher volume, then we'll reach out to those roads second in priority. And then third priority is all the remaining streets that are through streets. And then our fourth priority are dead-end roads and cul-de-sacs because of the difficulty of plowing them. Now, if we can, and on big snowstorms, we will reach out to other departments, and we'll try to get some of the smaller vehicles and loaders to start on the dead-end roads and cul-de-sacs with the equipment that we can't really plow larger streets on. But because of the difficulty of those type of streets, it typically takes a bit longer to plow them. One of the things this year that we're kind of excited about is, last year we tested a mapping system that each plow would have an iPad screen, and the screen would show where the other plows were plowing. And so if we know this, we can plan better from our trucks and be able to see what we have plowed, what that truck's plowed, and what the other guys around us have plowed, and it makes us a lot more efficient. It still was a little bit spotty in how it could be used, and so this year we've worked really hard. Our GIS department has worked really hard to develop a better one that's more real-time. Last year, you'd have to press update continually to kind of see what's going on. This will update real-time and provide a lot better coverage of what's being done. And so we feel like that will make our plows a lot more efficient, too. So we're kind of excited about this. It hasn't even been tested yet, and our GIS department's already been asked to go speak at a national conference back east on how this works. So that'll be interesting when we don't even know if it works. But if you have any questions, feel free to call us or go to this website. There's a map here, maybe, could you click on that, Tyler? So if you're ever wondering what your street looks like in the priority scheme of things, that's on this website. You can see all the priority ones are the darker blue lines, and you can see where your road is as far as when we get to it in order. And obviously, on a lighter snowstorm, we'll get to your street quicker because it's easier to clear the higher priority roads. But we have a great streets department. I went and spent some time with them paving this summer, and I can't tell you how impressed I was with how dedicated and hardworking every single one of them are. And I'm looking forward to spending some time in the plows with them this winter, probably as a passenger.
Thank you.
But just was really great to get to know them a little bit, and I'll say the cities are in really good hands with our streets department.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Chris. All right, Business Loan Fund of Utah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to introduce a guest that we're very fortunate to have with us tonight in just a minute. But before I do that, I wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about a very strong history that Spanish Fork City has about doing progressive things to help facilitate commerce in the community. And for me, I guess a number of different types of things come to mind. For example, we'll talk a little bit later tonight about SAPA in some different respects. And it was Seth's predecessor, Dave Euler, that decades ago did some things acting as a city manager to help bring what has kind of evolved into SAPA over the years to the community. A manufacturing operation that employs hundreds of people, that buys power from the city, that in every way, I think, is a great corporate citizen. And again, that's the result of somebody having some foresight and having a group of elected officials that at the time were willing to help bring that facility to the community. I think about the windmills. You know, Spanish Fork City created a redevelopment area to help make that project happen. I think about things like our airport that does many different things to help businesses work and function and succeed here in the community, something that's the direct result of an investment that Spanish Fork has made over time into that, into that facility. Today, in a lot of respects, Canyon Creek is on our minds. It's great to go to ribbon cuttings. It's great to be able... cuttings, it's great to be able to, to shop in new stores, to see the, the very positive impact that that has in our community. Of course, that is the result of, of what now is over a decade worth of work and effort. Again, a very progressive attitude that the community's had. That being said, Mr. Plagier, Mike Plagier, we're, like I said, I think, very fortunate to have him with us here tonight. He's here to talk about something that's now called the Business Loan Fund of Utah. And just so I don't prove my ignorance, I'll keep my comments about the details of that fund to a minimum, and I'll let him maybe expound on them a little bit. But, I think, again, to use the word, I think we're very fortunate, as Spanish Fork City, now to have an opportunity to participate in a fund that ultimately will provide small businesses in Spanish Fork with an opportunity to obtain financing that without this fund they could not get. So, some of the projects that I mentioned a few minutes ago, you know, a big manufacturing operation, a big retail project, and those sorts of things, in many respects, it's very easy for cities to find ways to assist manufacturers to expand, retailers to open new stores, and those sorts of things to happen in a community. It's harder for us, for reasons that frankly, they're out of our control. But given the tools that are available to us, it's harder for us to find meaningful ways to help small businesses. And I think that's probably the thing that I appreciate the most about this opportunity that we have with the Business Loan Fund of Utah. It gives Spanish Fork City a very direct, and again, I would say, very meaningful way to provide opportunities for smaller businesses in the community to grow and to prosper. And with that being said, Mike, do you wanna come on up? We really haven't scripted anything tonight, at least I haven't. I know Mr. Plagier has some, some thoughts in mind. I do hope that you'll take this opportunity with him here with us. He offices in Salt Lake, he resides in Farmington, so he's, he's a long ways from home tonight. We do anticipate having some action items on your agenda in two weeks relative to this fund, so that we can participate and make these opportunities available to businesses here. I think it's exciting. And, Mike, I'll let you take over. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you a little bit about this fund. Excited about this fund. But first, I'd just tell you a little bit about our organization. We started, had a career in banking, and worked in banking for 30 years. And nine years, about just almost nine years ago, December 2nd of '08, the, I was working for Zion, and was asked by the president of the bank to do some new things for him to, he was concerned about the foreclosure crisis coming, and asked that I try to figure out a way to turn foreclosures into affordable housing. And from that, over the last nine years, we started, nine years ago, we started a, a nonprofit called the Utah Center for Affordable Housing. We, what the purpose of that organization was to work with other nonprofits around the state of Utah, help them buy foreclosures, get access to foreclosures, buy those foreclosures, rehab them, and, and sell them to low and moderate income families. Since that, nine years ago, we've done over 800 units, foreclosed units that we've had turned into affordable housing. Along with that, in 2013, the state of Utah had some money that was the State Small Business Credit Initiative. It was some treasury money that was used to part of the Small Jobs Growth Act of 2010, and it was to be used to do venture capital loan guarantees and loan participations. The city, the state put that out for bid, and we were the successful bidder on that, and administered that, those funds for the state of Utah. That was a treasury program that ended in December 31st of 2016. And our board, that program was very successful over, from 2013 to 2016, we did over 54 million in loans to small businesses that, what we look at as businesses that were, we call them either formally bankable, because there were a lot of businesses during '08, and '09, and '10, that had been doing well before that, and the recession hurt them. They didn't have a balance sheet or income statements that could get conventional bank financing, or businesses that were starting, had been in business for a few years, needed some more money, but they were in, they, they couldn't get money from the bank because their balance sheets just didn't show, and their income didn't show that they qualified. Through that, we helped those businesses get the financing they needed so that they could grow. Nationwide, there's a real food desert in the $50,000 to $250,000 loans. If you need over that, the money's easier to find and to get. And if you need under that, there's several organizations that you can get under that. With that $50 to $250, there's what we call a financing desert there. When the treasury program ended in 2000, you know, the end of 2016, our board really saw the need to continue with the small business lending, and saw a great need out there in the communities. And as an organization, what we've tried to do is find those needs, where there's needs in the organization, where no one will step in and do it, and say, let's our organization step in and help make that work. So, since earlier this year, we've been working with a group of cities, and we appreciate Dave Anderson and Spanish Fork and their willingness. They're one of our original founding cities that we've been working on this since about February with Dave on this. To put together a fund, its initial fund will be $7 million. Right now, we have the cities that are, and counties that are, we're working with to close the fund. We have Spanish Fork, Box Elder County, Weber County, Ogden City, Orem City, and Provo City. I can tell you that Provo City has given final approval for the fund. Weber County has given final approval for the fund. Orem City has approved participation in the fund, and will anticipate next Tuesday appropriating the money to participate in the fund. Ogden is going in next week for a working session, and then hopes to have final approval the first week of December. Box Elder, they're a little bit delayed, and we're hoping for approval in Spanish Fork in the next week or two. With that, we'll have an initial fund of, of $7 million. The lender has approved that already. Documents of, we should have final draft of the documents ready this week for approval by the cities and counties. We think this is a great opportunity, because the cities and counties, you can take, for every $50,000 you put into the fund, you get access to $350 in loans. So, it's a great way to leverage city money to go into businesses in, in the city that may, may not be able to get regular financing. And I think there's a great need in all the cities across, across Utah for those type of businesses. We will, the city will have an opportunity at initial, when we initially are contacted by a business or ones referred. We think we'll get a lot of referrals from banks, from the city. But each referral that we get, the way this will work is, we'll do an initial summary of the business, of what it is, and a summary of what they're requesting. Though, we'll send that to the city, then the city can decide, is this business one that's acceptable and meets the criteria? That Spanish Fork can decide. Each city wants different things. Provo does not want any restaurants. But Ogden City says, if it's in an approved area, we love new restaurants. So, each city can decide what kind of businesses they wanna go have, help participate within their city. The city will have an opportunity initially to say, this meets our criteria. And it's just an initial summary, it's not a credit. But does this, is this the kind of city we wanna use our funds to finance? They'll give a, a go-ahead, a consent to underwrite, and then that loan is underwritten and goes to committee. The committee will consist of each bank that participates in it gets a seat on the committee. Our nonprofit will have a seat, and whichever city or county is putting up the loan loss for that loan will also have a seat on that committee. Then that loan committee can approve the loan, they can decline the loan, or they can say, we'll do this, but we need more top loss on it. The city's money would be in a, in a top loss position, so that $50,000 equates to about 15% of the loan amount. That would be in a top loss position. But the city would earn interest at that on the same rate as the bank earns. And the bank's interest rate is going to be a LIBOR rate plus 3.25. We anticipate most of these loans will be fixed, and today, that rate would be about 5.5% that the banks would get. The city will earn that same interest rate on that, but their money will be in top loss. Now, our organization has put up a top loss. We're gonna put up a top loss that's a blanket top loss for all the loans. So, if the loan is, the loss is greater than the 15% that the city or county puts up, then our loss kicks in. And we're putting in, our organization, our board is, they, they love this project, they think there's a real need for it, and they're gonna put in $600,000 of top loss of loan, loan loss reserve for that. But we see this as a great way. We really appreciate Spanish Fork being innovative and willing to look at this. I was at a national conference in DC a couple of weeks ago on small business lending, and I was talking to some of the participants there about this loan program and what we're doing, and, and they're all marveled at it, because you don't see anything like this in the state, in, not only in the state, but in the country. This is a new way to work with banks, working with private money, public money, and being able to leverage that money and, and make that fund grow. We're hoping, as this program is a success, we've talked to several other banks, they're excited about coming into this, and we hope the fund grows. Several of the cities look at this and say, if this is successful the first year, then they're gonna put more money into it and grow the fund next year. So, we think that, and it, and we try to keep the number of cities small, because every city has a, an attorney, which they're all, they're all wonderful. And he's been, he's been great to work with. But the more people you get in the room and try to make something work, the harder it is. So, we tried to keep it with a small number, but as soon as this closes, which we hope is early December, we'll go out and try to get more communities involved in this and grow the fund. So, I really appreciate working with Dave. Dave's been great to work with, and we're excited about the fund. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
I've got, I've got one. Is this, and you may have explained it, and I didn't quite catch it. Is this for, for business startup, or is this a fund that, that local businesses could use for expansion or renovation, different things that they would use a loan for as well?
Yes. We see this not as a startup business. One of our criteria is that they have to have been in business for two years and have income. There are different micro enterprise loan fund and different funds that will do the startup, and, and we don't wanna compete with those. We look at a, a minimum loan size of about $50,000, but it's exactly for that. It can be working capital, it can be facade, it can be equipment, it can be, and the city, each city can say, this is what we want it for. We want it for this cluster, we want it for this type. They have input on what they wanna see in the city. And the other thing is, the funds from Spanish Fork only get used in Spanish Fork for cities that Spanish Fork has approved to participate in. So, your money won't go into Orem, or Provo, or into Ogden, or Box Elder.
I'm excited. Mike, thanks for coming. I told Mike earlier, from a banking standpoint, we could send you a couple of requests a month, and I know every other bank in town could, of people that just are in that, are in that area where they're not quite bankable. And, and I think Heather with the Chamber of Commerce, and the accolades we've already given the chamber today, you, you should take this as a note to the businesses that you guys know the business community well. But I see this as a fantastic way for especially business owners up and down Main Street, and property owners up and down Main Street, to be able to access this fund if they, if they can't quite get a bank loan in town. And that rate is a very competitive rate, should be something affordable, affordable for people. And I'm proud that the city took an initial step to participate. So, excited.
Great. Hey, thank you. We look forward to working with it more.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for making the trip.
Okay, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to, it's gonna be a public hearing. Our ordinance is 2617, make an amendment to height requirements in the S-Z zone.
This is the height requirement one, right?
That's right. Wanted to pay attention.
Yeah.
They're all right.
Got a little distracted for a minute. Our shopping center zone's primarily concentrated up in the area around the junction of I-15 and US Highway 6. A little bit of Canyon Creek is zoned, SC, which we'll get on here in just a second. Just go over layers, Tyler, and then down to planning and zoning. And then down at the bottom, yep. So, it's this kind of blue color here. So, ShopCo and some of the properties that are, sorry, that is Macy's. So, Macy's, and then ShopCo over here, and some of the properties around that are zoned, shopping center. The Old Trust Plant property, we'll talk more about that in a minute, that's zoned, shopping center, and so forth. And that's really the part of the community that we're talking about here, where we talk about potentially raising the maximum allowable height from 48 feet to 60 feet. Typically, when we propose a change like that, it's because we have a particular project in mind. In this case, it's the prospect of a hotel being built right around here, where they potentially would like to have a building that would be 56 feet tall, we've been told. So, that being the proposal, as we've talked about it as staff, particularly with it being the shopping center zone, which, you know, really with, with very few exceptions, is not in any kind of close proximity to, for example, maybe some, some single-family dwellings, or some other land uses that might be impacted by that, that height differential going from 48 feet, and maybe to something taller, up to 60 feet. I don't wanna to make it sound like we've taken this lightly, but I wouldn't view this change, from our perspective, as really being a big deal, potentially having a 60-foot tall building. If there was any place in the community where it would make sense, I think it's in these areas in this zone. And, you know, even in some respects, I would say that we could benefit from having a little bit taller building, something a little bit more massive, with a little bit more bulk to it, particularly in an area of town where we'd like to see some more intense land uses. So, again, that's the proposal, just changing the maximum height from 48 to 60 feet in the shopping center zone. Both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended that it be approved.
Since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone that would like to come and talk about this item on the agenda can do so now. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Scopes. Any questions, comments?
How soon are we gonna see the plat for this zone change?
He's holding it.
Different one, yeah. Yeah. Couple weeks, month?
Um...
Soon.
No, you won't see it, because it, that's an administrative approval. We'll handle that as staff. The Planning Commission, just last week, approved a conditional use for the hotel to be built right here. I'm not trying to put a negative spin on it at all by saying you won't see it, but that's, the upside is, our processes are so efficient that we handle things like that at the staff level. We're pretty nimble and get things approved quick. We, we do brag about that. that sometimes. But we'll have information on the city's website as soon as they make formal application for site plan approval for that, which, you guys have anything to add, timing-wise?
The site plan's for somewhere between a day.
Okay, so, if anybody in the community wants to, wants to come in and take a look, it's available, and you can sit down. We talked about the, the actual entity, that's probably on the application at this point. Okay, so Hampton Inn is what we expect, that'll be branded.
I love Hampton Inn. I love your pillows.
It's going to come already, they're...
When Chris kicks her out, she's got a place to stay.
No, you guys have good pillows, thank you.
And the little soaps and the bath towels.
A great breakfast.
She's got a whole bathroom full of all of that stuff, including the pillows.
Pillows, the blankets, everything else. Chief, you might want to come talk to her.
So I guess we have that site plan approved in a matter of a few weeks.
Okay, cool, thanks. Great.
Just one question for those that might be concerned, this does not affect the flight path to the airport, correct?
It doesn't, it won't have any impact. There are other things in the immediate vicinity that are taller, got a hundred foot tall.
They're flying that low, we're in trouble.
They've got, yeah, right.
Okay, anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, I was going to say, due to the good pillows, I want to make a...
Oh, go ahead, yeah, you make the motion.
Okay, due to the good pillows, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Z-one-two-dash-seventeen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City. Am I even on the right thing?
No, one up from that.
My take it over, my, it won't come up.
Those pillows got her flabbergasted.
Got it.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-six-dash-seventeen, making amendments to height requirements in the SC zone.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Beck, and a second by Councilman Menon Hall, and this will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
That is approved, so we're off to the races on that one. Okay, ordinance Z-twelve-dash-seventeen, changing zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Robarge Collision Zone Change.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you, there are a couple of different components to this. First of all, let me talk about what Mr. Robarge wants to do, I'm sure he'll want to add some things, but in short, they'd like to expand the business that they have a few blocks south of us here on Main Street. I have every reason to, to say that I think it's a great business, and Kerry's been very involved in the community a lot of different ways over the year, years, and we've seen a lot of very positive changes happen on Main Street, you know, maybe from Third South down to Volunteer, with improvements that UDOT's made, you know, over the course of the last ten years, with different businesses that have opened. I think if we were to go back and look at some pictures from ten years ago to today, we might even be surprised at how much it's changed. And from my perspective, this really is going to be the next big thing that will help dress up that end of the community. Robarge Collision with this proposal would be expanded, and we can look at a site plan that they have in just a minute, but at present, with that being an automotive body shop on property that is Zone C-two, it's a legal but non-conforming use, or it's grandfathered. And grandfathered uses can't be expanded. So, in order to permit Robarge Collision to expand, we would need to change the zoning on the property that's outlined in black here, so that it matches the zoning that is to the west of the subject property there along Fifth South. And in short, the Development Review Committee discussed that, that concept, Planning Commission did as well, and both bodies have recommended that that change be approved. So going from the C-two zone to the I-one zone, which I will just mention, that's kind of a unique step for us to take, I can't envision very many other scenarios but for a business like Robarge Collision that would want to expand, a business that I think we have every reason to believe will remain in operation well into the future. This isn't a situation where I think we need to be overly concerned about perhaps the company changing hands and being operated differently, and, and, you know, maybe the, the result of this change having a negative impact instead of a positive on the neighborhood, but certainly with the factors that we're aware of being what they are, from my perspective, this is an easy change to support, changing that zoning. The other part of the proposal has to do with, it's kind of like Grifols, so with Grifols, they were short on parking, and they were short on landscaping. So we developed this development enhancement overlay, which is something that we don't intend to use really often, only in circumstances where I think it'll be much like the Grifols proposal and this one, where you've got some kind of an existing facility that's proposed to be changed, and with that, somebody can't meet the current requirements that are in place. In the case of the Robarge expansion, if you can maybe go, I think we've got a site plan on, maybe the next page?
Oh, on the next page?
Yeah. Or the third page?
Yeah, it's, it's there. A little farther.
A little bit farther down, I think. So, this is the existing building here, this being Fifth South, that being Main Street, this is the drive into Landmark High School. The existing main building is right there in kind of that tan color, another building that they currently use, exists, is identified as such. This would be the, the expansion area, and depending on how you calculate their parking requirements, and whether we were to give them credit for parking that exists under the roof here, they're deficient in terms of meeting our requirements for parking for this kind of an automotive repair business. Now, that being said, I think, like most of us probably, we've observed Robarge Collision over the years, and we haven't really seen that they have a parking problem, and I would assume that with this new facility, they will be able to handle more customers, and maybe you'll have more of a need for parking, but given the area that they have behind the shop, you know, for cars that may be in different stages of repair and that sort of a thing, I think we have every reason to believe that, that as proposed, the parking's adequate, just speaking for myself relative to that. For a number of different reasons, they can't, from my perspective, modify the site to add some of the landscaping that we require. For example, a certain amount of landscaping in the front, adjacent to the public street, that makes the building completely inaccessible as it's currently laid out, and there are some other factors that also relate to landscaping that make it such that they would need to have the development enhancement overlay approved in order to make this expansion happen the way they've designed it. Got another perspective on the proposed expansion, I think we have a couple of building elevations as well, so just FYI, east elevation, so this is what you'll see from Main Street, and maybe Kerry, this is a good time for me to turn it over to you or Mr. Fallon, just maybe to talk a little bit more about this, and anything else that you have, you would like to add, but relative to the development enhancement overlay, like the change to the I-one zone, that is also something that both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have recommended be approved, so that the site plan that we were just looking at can be followed with the project's development. So if you have anything for me, I'll let these gentlemen maybe fill in things that I've missed.
Great.
Mr. Robarge, are you aware of the cellphone rule that is enforced when you're in the chambers?
Yes, I, I...
What's your understanding of that?
My understanding of the cellphone rule from these chambers were put into place when I was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and if your phone went off when you were in a board meeting, you had to put five dollars in the kitty, and then at the end of the month, we had a party on the cellphone money.
Ours is a little different.
I was a member of the chamber when you were president, that never, ever happened.
So you want to know what happens in the city?
I would like to know what the city's policy is on cellphones.
The city policy, if your phone goes off in a meeting, you have to bring donuts to everyone.
Is there any good donut shops in...
That's the challenge.
After, I might be able to recommend one.
At least we got that straight. Mayor, council, I, I'm happy to be here tonight, and grateful that it's election night, and there's some, some of you in the chairs that are a little bit more worried about it than I am tonight, so, just glad you're all here, so, I would be open to answer any questions that you may have about our expansion. I would like to make one point.
Let's hear it.
Yeah, the point of the parking at my facility, the only time that we have problems and issues with parking is during Fiesta Days. And I give away free parking and free hot dogs and free sodas on Fiesta Days, and we are capable of putting about a hundred and twenty-five cars on that property. And so, we are fully aware of what it would take to man our facility with wrecked cars, and we're just real excited to be able to, to do that.
That won't hinder you with this new building?
We may have to park cars in the building for Fiesta Days.
I mean, given the hot dogs and free drinks, so, okay, yeah, that would be the more pertinent question there.
Not a question, but I appreciated the comment that Dave made on just your business and, and really, your contribution to the community over the years, you were chamber president, and, you know, a concern would be that this, this change could be made, and you could sell your business, or, you know, and it could change hands, and, and different, now there, there's a different zone, possibly.
Sure.
And, and for me, I'm comforted by knowing that your commitment to the community and what you've, what you've done for so many years has been...
And might I add, his son will take over, so we've got a lot of years ahead of us.
Well, I have to be honest, I have full intentions of selling this business as fast as I can.
To him?
And the potential owners are working, and there's three of them, three of my boys are working for me, and I'm sure that they can take it over the...
You need to pay them more, so they can buy it.
Either way.
Is your plan to tear the existing, or just improve with the build?
Good question. This is the current facility right here, so this is the nineteen-fifties architecture design of a nineteen-fifties General Motors dealership, rounded glass showrooms, big open showrooms, so that they could park cars in there. We've operated a collision facility out of that, pretty much too big of a space for a collision facility, but we've utilized it and made it work for us. Mr. Fallon and the architecture team has done a pretty good job of adopting the, the design of what this old building was, and we've got some glass panels here to match the glass showroom, and then there's some brick columns that'll match the brick that are over here on this side, so that it ties new technology and the new building in with the existing facility. We truly wanted to preserve that nineteen-fifties building on our Main Street here in Spanish Fork and preserve the history of what that was. Those of you that have been longtime native residents know that Orson Brown opened that facility as a Chevrolet dealership, and it passed hands a few times until we ended up...
Ridley Chevrolet.
Ridley and Barber Brothers.
Lost about five years off my life there, working on that building. I hit a steam pipe with a jackhammer, scared the heck out of me, so...
So, to answer your question, it is to just expand and build into the parking lot.
Great. If not, then we'll open up the public hearing, see if any of the public have something to say about it. Thanks, Kerry, for coming.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in public hearing, anyone from the public that'd like to come and address this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, and a second by Councilman Scopes, this will be a roll call vote, are any questions or comments?
Just one comment, Mayor, I hope Kerry doesn't fault me for this, but he, he's a current client of mine at the bank, and he drives a hard deal, so I don't know if I'll finance this in the future, but Junior makes me say that legal language, right? It's not going to keep me from voting in favor of some, of this good change, but just to the public knowledge of it's out there. Good enough, don't have to recuse myself.
He might buy donuts, too, do I have to say anything about that?
Anybody's ads at Utah Valley magazines?
Just kidding, Mike.
Kerry, thank you.
All right, way to go, Kerry, way to bring her down here. All right, seeing none, let's go, this will be a roll call vote.
Let's make the motion first.
We did.
Nope, we didn't.
Oh, didn't we make, oh, we made the motion go out of close.
Yep.
All right.
I move we approve ordinance number Z-twelve-dash-seventeen, an ordinance changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Robarge Collision Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes, this will be a roll call vote, hey, I gave you the tie last night.
That's okay, I'm okay.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
You're set to go, man.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, I think that's going to be a great asset to that, the south part of our Main Street, we appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
Yep. Okay, moving on, ordinance Z-thirteen-dash-seventeen, changing your zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for Canyon Creek, Phase Five Sapa Zone Change.
Thank you. This, this has become kind of a necessary cleanup, probably not essential, but this image does a good job, I think, of illustrating what's planned for a new road that will connect what we now know as Kirby Lane in with Marketplace Drives. Marketplace Drive is a relatively new road that's north of Famous Footwear, TJ Maxx and those businesses, well north of that, in fact. There'll be a road back behind where Cinemark, which is right here on this image, so to the west of that, there'll be this road constructed, it'll be built on land that's currently owned by Sapa, and the city will be obtaining a, a part of Sapa's land for the road. The adjacent developer of Canyon Creek will also be obtaining some of Sapa's land, it's the land, or the area on this image that's outlined in black right here, as well as this little part over here. Given that Canyon Creek will use the land for essentially retail purposes, it seems to make the most sense to change the zoning from industrial to retail zones, so where this part of the Sapa land that we're talking about will be adjacent to property that's Zone C-two, we proposed that that zoning be changed from Industrial One to C-two, and over on the other part, where it's adjacent to land that's currently zoned shopping center, you know, literally, that site that we just talked about where Hampton Inn will be constructed, that's been proposed that the zoning be changed from I-one there to shopping center. Both the Planning Commission and Development Review Committee have reviewed this proposal and have recommended that it be approved.
Great, since it'll be a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Menon Hall, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So is there anyone that would like to come up and address this project? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments about this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance Z-thirteen-dash-seventeen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Canyon Creek Phase Five Sapa Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Menon Hall, a second by Councilman Gordon, roll call vote on this. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That one passes, so we're off to the races on that one. Okay, new business, ordinance twenty-seven-dash-seventeen, amended business license fee requirement and addressing changes to home occupation.
You can see from the ordinance and the memo that I sent out that there are quite a few changes to lang... You can see from the ordinance and the memo that I sent out that there are quite a few changes to language, but it all really boils down to one simple fact, which is that the Utah Code was changed this past legislative session to exempt certain home occupations from paying a business license fee. So the changes that are proposed tonight will bring our program into conformity with state law, which we always do. And with that proposed change, we also are recommending that our fee structure for business licenses be modified so that that program can continue to be self-sufficient. So in essence, as we likely will see a decrease, you know, something on order of a few hundred businesses that no longer will pay a business license fee, that's made it necessary to raise our business license fee for the remaining businesses that we have in the community from what is now $40 to $60. So that's part of the change that's before we do tonight. That change will, like I said, that'll allow us to operate our business license program without using any other revenue, any kind of general fund revenue or tax revenue, to support that service that the city provides. And another thing that I think the changes that are proposed with language in the ordinance helps to clarify is really what that fee is all about for Spanish Fork City for us. We don't charge a business license fee, for example, to recoup monetarily for resources that maybe we expend dealing with shoplifting in retail establishments or in providing other types of services to support businesses here in the community. For us, simply, it's an administrative fee. That is to say, we have Gal, her title is the city's administrative, I'm sorry, business license specialist, and she manages a program. And she does a number of different things with the well over 1,000 businesses that we have in the community to make sure that we have a complete record of everybody that is doing business in the community, to make sure that those businesses are properly registered with any state agencies that they need to be registered with. And with very few exceptions, all businesses need to be registered in different ways with other agencies besides just us. So she spends a considerable amount of time researching those types of things. We also provide inspections to businesses. For a number of businesses, in fact, the vast majority of businesses in the community, they get an inspection one time when they first receive a business license. However, for some other businesses, businesses that, for example, might have spaces for large gatherings of people, Cinemark, when they open, they, in fact, in the process of prepping for different inspections that they'll get before they get a business license. And then every year after that, they will receive an inspection as part of their business license renewal. And that's simply to make sure that, you know, in the case of something like a theater, somebody doesn't have some access to a necessary exit blocked or various things like that. In the past, as we've done those annual inspections, we found fire suppression systems, sprinklers that have been disconnected, different things like that. The other businesses that are required to have an annual inspection include things like manufacturing operations or restaurants, just different places where there's some measure of a hazard there that potentially we can help to mitigate by having our fire code official do an annual visit. I think we're doing about 90 of those a year, you know, again, of the over 1,000 businesses that we have in the community. But that's just another component of our business license program and different things that we do. From our perspective as a municipality, I think some of the more important reasons for having the program that we have include, like I kind of touched on a minute ago, simply having a good record of what's happening and where it's happening in the community. That helps us make sure that zoning laws are being respected. It helps us make sure that, to some extent, our residents as consumers are protected. And, you know, that being said, still, I think probably the thing that has us the most concerned about business licensing, and it goes really to the heart of the record-keeping side of things, and making sure that businesses are properly registered with other agencies. So the state tax commission is a really important one for us. You understand very, very well how much we rely on sales tax. But to just point out one thing that we were able to catch here in the last year relative to a new business in the community, and it came through our business license program and just that series of checks that our business license specialist does, have a new car dealership in town that is absolutely thriving. I won't mention in my name, but they sell a lot of trucks right next to I-15. And they opened and we rushed to get them a business license so that they could open under their new name. And as we did our checks into how they were registered with the state relative to sales tax, you know, we caught on pretty quickly that they didn't have the proper point of sale noted as Spanish Fork. So if you think about the volume of just money that was going through that business on a monthly basis and the amount of sales tax that they were generating, the prospect that that potentially wouldn't work its way back to Spanish Fork through the proper channels because of an incorrect way that they were registered with the state. And being able to catch that, you know, we're certainly talking in that case about tens of thousands of dollars every month that potentially we would be foregoing but for, you know, having a competent person managing the program who recognized that and helped us get it straightened out pretty quickly. And we were able to recoup everything that Spanish Fork City was due and so forth. But that's just a little bit more of some of the things that we've recognized over the years as being important relative to having a program that works. And again, having it just simply be self-sustaining is important when we simply run the numbers. And it's a really simple formula that we've used over the years to calculate what our business license fee should be. It's simply what are our expenses divided by how many licenses we have, and that's a number. Or at least it's practically that simple. We still always kind of look over our shoulder a little bit and like to know, you know, if that puts us on the high side relative to neighboring communities or just where we might fall. You know, if there's a reason maybe for us to be alarmed, we like to just kind of keep a check on that. And even with this change that's proposed in going from $40 to $60, I'm happy to report that I think we checked 10 or 12 different cities in our area. Most of them in Utah County. We're still, if not the lowest, really close to the lowest relative to what that business license fee is. But that all being said, again, home occupations that don't have impact, which is language that mirrors exactly what's found in the state law, they will be exempt from paying a business license administration fee or, for that matter, any fee in order to get a business license unless they need an inspection. But at least in theory, those businesses wouldn't need an inspection, so they should be exempt from any fees with the language that's proposed. I think that's all I had on that.
Any questions for Dave?
I have a question, Dave. What will be the mechanism for a business owner to understand this? Are we just mailing out a bill that's higher this year? Is there anything that we've thought of or will be doing to let people know about this change?
Certainly open any suggestions or ideas. It has kind of become our standard practice to use Facebook to get the word out on some things like this. We're in the process now of getting ready for business license renewals, so yes, somebody would receive a letter. At least this next year, in all candor, we're talking about going paperless maybe in the next couple of years and forgetting what's kind of been a long laborious tradition of sending out 1,100 letters a few times a year to people. But at least this year, we would send a letter out that would have an explanation about what's going on with the change. Probably in a couple of different forms. One, to businesses that would be exempt from the fee, and one that, you know, would go to businesses that would still be paying the fee. But we're completely open to any suggestions or ideas that any of you might have. The Chamber of Commerce has already helped us a little bit in terms of giving us, you know, some airtime to talk about the change.
I think Mike was going to make comment with that.
Yeah, two things to that respect. Up in, and I think I shared this with some of you, but at the League of Cities and Towns Conference in September, I had an opportunity to visit with now Senator Andrig, but then when he sponsored this bill, it was Representative Andrig. And talked to him a little bit about this because it was a bill that received support from the league. It had different iterations of it before, but then ended up being this type of a bill. And again, the reason I bring that up is because he knew of Spanish Fork. He's not our representative and he's not our senator, but he knew of Spanish Fork. And it was before I could even bring it up to him. He said, hey, just to let you know, that bill is something that, again, Spanish Fork is already doing. You guys already charge $40 across the board to every business that needs a business license, whether it's a, you know, 20,000 square foot building in the new area or whether it's mom and pop shop on Main Street, they pay $40 to get that license. Well, that was being abused in different cities across the state. And so this, you know, modifies that and brings it to a different level. But then the next component was this home occupation business. And that brings me to my second point is, number one, we're already playing by some pretty good rules in Spanish Fork and people should know that and the business community should know that. Number two is that we had a downtown on Main meeting where this was first brought up, and I don't know if it's been mentioned to the general membership of the chamber yet, probably not. The board has, okay. But in that meeting, Dave discussed it in detail, just like he did now, about, you know, you have two options. Those businesses still need a license and they need it for a number of different reasons. And we want to know because who else is somebody going to ask if somebody's a legitimate business if they don't call the city? They're going to call the city. So they still need that license. The other reason is financing. In my world, they always need the license. We're going to ask for that, one of the first things we're going to ask for. But it's either, you look at the business community and say, okay, now this fee that's not going to be paid by a couple hundred businesses needs to be picked up by the other thousand businesses in town or else the general taxpayer of Spanish Fork has to pick that up. So which is the best model? And when we proposed that, and Mayor Stacy can back me up there in that meeting as well, but there wasn't one business owner in the Main Street community, which is where I could see this maybe hurting more than anything because, you know.
And I actually talked to a few more people today and their biggest concern was actually with the legislation and not necessarily with how the city's handling it. They think, you know, it's somewhat unfair that any home-based business is not getting any, paying any type of a fee because they're still earning revenue. So basically, that was their big concern.
Travis's, Travis's. I mean, he was going nuts back there, Heather. He was about to call the chief on you.
Okay, sorry. So I did talk to a few businesses today. Their big concern is actually with the legislation and not necessarily with, not necessarily with how the city is handling it. So their concern is that these home-based businesses are still earning revenue, so why aren't they paying the fee? And that was their big concern and not necessarily with, you know, passing it on to the other types of businesses.
And that's a good point. If I was a business owner, I think they've got a valid argument there, which maybe you'll see some, legislation constantly has unintended consequences when it's trying to correct a problem, and so maybe that's the unintended consequence. But from my standpoint, my reading of it, my viewpoint of it, as not a business owner, Brandon, you are mayor, you know, you are, you pay these fees. My employer pays the fee. I don't think this is any way, a way that some people have tried to sensationalize it. I think this is cut and dry and it's the city trying to be upfront and honest with, you're not going to let go of employees in Dave's office. They still need to be there and they're still doing the same work, if not more work. And this is simply that administrative cost to cover it, not a revenue generator that maybe some cities used in some aspect across the state, but it definitely hasn't been the revenue generator in our department or in our city, so.
And I think that's most important to recognize here publicly, that this is not a revenue generator and that those home businesses are still going to cost us a certain amount of money but aren't paying their fair share. So everyone needs to understand that still needs to be paid and we're not making money off of this. So today, when I got online and printed up like the flow chart of just getting a business license, I think some people think, come in, get a business license, let me push print and it costs five cents. And they're like, there's no way the fees are there. And you've given us an outline description of those fees and I think it's valid, the $60. I think we might lose people coming in and getting business licenses. I think they might look at it and like, if business licenses are going up, I'm not going to register. Do we foresee that becoming a problem or there's really not much we can do about that, right?
You know, honestly, there might be some people out there that are that sensitive to cost.
Yeah.
I have a hard time really fathoming, though, that it'd be much of an issue at all. Particularly given that it's much more common for licenses to cost 100, you know, and more dollars on an annual basis in other communities than where we're at, even at $60. But, I mean, again, I know some people are very sensitive to even something like a $20 difference per year.
And it goes back to, maybe sometimes we can correct in the public eye as well for Dave's office that, and a salon is going to have to pay the fee. They're a home-based business that has that, you know, so I get that. But those businesses that decide not to get a business license and be upfront about it in the city, it's not the city that usually goes, finds that out. It's the phone calls into Dave's office, you know, during one week where 19 cars are pulling up and they're like, hey, somebody's running a business. And so you check on it and then you say, hey, do you need a business license, you know?
Yeah.
So it's a lot of self-policing that goes on in our city that way.
If I may add, I really appreciated something Dave said a moment ago, that it's, we're doing this change to be in compliance with the state law. Senate Bill 81 that ran in this last session, as Councilman Mendenhall said from Senator Andrig. And we don't have an opinion about the bill one way or the other. We just get to fall in line with it and the changes that we're making today are in lockstep with it. If we go to line 130, where did it go?
You went to the first one?
Yeah, the first one, sorry. Yeah, line 41, it'll be underlined here. First of all, it says as a part of this, that a city may impose a fee on a business to recover the cost of regulation, which is what Dave's outlined. We attributed just about $60,000 to the cost of administering a business license program. Not a lot of money as it relates to an operation like this. And that's where that fee comes back. And then really what people have been talking about, I think on Facebook and other places, is this section of the law. And there, I think, is a misunderstanding for at least some people. They take this change in the law to mean that the city cannot charge a fee to a home-based business, period. And that's simply not the law. And I think it's important to correct that misunderstanding. If somebody out there thinks that this bill made it so that all home occupation businesses, no home occupation business should pay a fee of any kind for business license, that's not what the bill says. Specifically, jumping down to line 136, it says that we cannot charge a fee to a home-based business unless the combined offsite impact of the home-based business and the primary residential use materially exceeds the offsite impact. So there's that word, "impact." We have used the same language in our bill, or in our ordinance. We also can't charge a business license to a kid under 18. So if any of your children are going to open up a lemonade stand, in true reading of the law, they should have had a business license in the past. But this law says that we can't charge that. I don't think we ever charged a kid a lemonade stand license. But technically speaking, they were subject to that and probably some city somewhere was charging that lemonade stand an itinerant fee or something like that. This bill makes it so that we can't do that. We are following this. But if anybody is, if anybody out there thinks that we're maybe thumbing our nose at the state law, I think it's important that they understand we're not. We're in lockstep with the law with this change.
Great. Any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 27-17, amending business license fee requirements and addressing changes to home occupations.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
That is approved. Maple Heights Highlands Ward. Maple Heights Highlands Ward Preliminary Platte.
My guess is that some of you have noticed some construction activity happening south of Maple Mountain High School on 2550 East. The LDS Church is constructing a meeting house on the site that's just north of the Maple Highlands, I think it is, subdivision right here, right adjacent to 2550 East with the development of that church. There'll be the development of a section of this roadway here on the west side of that site, and we anticipate that, I don't generally like to speculate about things, but I would guess that in the next couple of years, we'll probably see some other development proposals happen on kind of the remaining part of the property that this lot is being subdivided from. But tonight, the only thing that's before the council is the proposal. In one sense, we could call this maybe like a one-lot subdivision to create this lot here that conceivably could be conveyed to a different owner than whoever might own the remaining part of that existing property there. It's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. We have talked with the applicant about dedicating right-of-way for future expansions of 2550 East and for its first south with this subdivision, and they're in the process of making that happen. And with that being the case, both staff and the, staff being the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the proposed subdivision be approved.
Any questions, comments?
Ever been to church at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, Brandon?
No.
I have. This is about to solve it.
You want to make the motion then?
I'll entertain a motion on this. One of you, anybody?
I make a motion to approve the Maple Highlands Ward Preliminary Platte.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pumpkins forever, Dave.
Pardon me?
Pumpkins forever and the rest of that.
Is forever a year?
No.
All right, board appointment. I would like to appoint vacancy on our rodeo committee, and I would like to appoint Dale Robinson to the rodeo committee.
I move, we approve the mayor's appointment of Dale Robinson to the rodeo committee.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scovis, second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is he old enough?
Yeah. Just come through a certain door.
Yeah. All right, just checking.
Yep, there you go. All right, Fred Vincent, agricultural use of PI water.
Really quick, this development right here had a tailpipe that came through the development, and it crossed the road here, and Fred used it to water this little corral area that he has. It would be a lot of money to pipe that tailpipe, and it's kind of a problem. We have these pipes running through residential neighborhoods that eventually won't be used, or when they are used and they get blocked, it floods a bunch of homes. And so we generally try to avoid having them if we can, and this is an instance where he already had a pressurized irrigation meter right here. It's a two-inch, so it's big enough to do the watering that he needed. And we've, in a couple other instances, have made agreements with people where, once they use what they normally would have used when, before they had this situation, then after that, we just charge them an agricultural rate, which is basically the cost to deliver the water through our pipe system. He would still pay his water shares assessments, and he still owns the water. All we do is we deliver his water through our pipes. And so it works really well. It doesn't have a huge impact on our system, and it saves a lot of costs and what I would say, liability and a future, a future empty pipe once development occurs. And I think there will come a day where we will not be glad we have a lot of empty irrigation pipes under our roads and yards and things like that. They seem to corrode, and as soon as you find a way into them, then you see sinkholes everywhere. And I think this is good policy. Now, one thing about this agreement, he's looked at it, but he wants to have his attorney look at it, his attorney hasn't looked at it. So I'd ask that you approve it, but it's possible it could come back. It was modeled after the other ones we've approved that have gone through attorneys, and so I kind of doubt it will change, but there's that chance. So I would say approve it, and hopefully I don't have to come back.
This action says consent. What is that? Do you want us to do a, ratify it, make a motion and ratify it later?
No, let's make a motion to change and bring it back.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fred Vincent PI water lease.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I move, we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Appreciate all those who are here. Sure thinned out from the start.
You didn't want to say anything? You don't want to say something?
Oh, you know what? I think it's all good.
You should get a medal for staying here the whole time.
It's okay, I'll get it.
She's a BYU student getting her MBA.